All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 18th, meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. My name is Deb Shore, serving as Chair this year. To my left is our Vice Chair, Kristi Yocum, Commissioner Vest on the end, and to my right, fellow Commissioners, Roma Amundson and Sean Flowerday. If you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, if you'd begin the agenda, please.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.ene.gov. Agenda item one are minutes, approved minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on October 11th, 2022.
I move approval.
Second.
Corrections or comments? Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting regarding the One and Six Year Road and Bridge Improvement Program on October 13th, 2022.
Move approval. Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes from the One and Six Road hearing. Call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims, approval of the claims process through October 18th, 2022.
Move approval. Second.
Motion second to approve the claims. Call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next are claims including billings for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided in Nebraska by statute 23-135. This includes City of Lincoln Information Services dated October 13th, 2022, for a total of $3,699.60 in the hub dated October 12th, 2022, for a total of $5,240.98.
Motion to... Is there a motion to approve the claims?
I move to approve. Second.
Motion second to approve claims under item B. Call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next are consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one with the single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items approve of amendments to the following county contracts. C-21-785 with Midwest Service and Sales Company for the annual supply of greater blades. C-21-742 with BMI Janitorial Group for cleaning services for county and public building commission offices. C-21-750 with Language Line Services, Inc., doing business as Language Line Solutions, Inc., for on-demand remote interpreting. C-20-791 with True Green LP, doing business as True Green Lawn Care for weed control and fertilization services for county corrections. Right-of-way contrast with Lee Lukean Revocable Trust, North 176th Street and Van Dorn Street, an amount of $2,235 received and placed on file the county attorney quarterly report for July through September 2022. Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent items. Call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is a public hearing. This is Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 22005 to amend the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to add the Comprehensive Watershed Master Plan.
Good morning.
Good morning. Tim Zock, Superintendent of Stormwater with Transportation and Utilities.
I want you to swear your oath. Do you sound like a swearer affirm that the tests we're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, in partnership with the Lower Pot South Natural Resources District, has developed a Comprehensive Watershed Master Plan that compiles all previously completed watershed master plans, starting with Beale Slough in 2000 and concluding with the North Salt Creek Watersheds in 2018. This master plan creates a consistent priority scoring for projects and assists LTU watershed in prioritizing capital improvement projects to reduce flooding, stabilize streams, and improve water quality across the city. Currently, there are a total of 106 remaining projects totaling an estimated $47 million. This prioritization is an important tool to help guide the city and NRD in implementing these remaining projects to improve the public safety and health of our community in a proactive, efficient, and fiscally responsible way. This Comprehensive Watershed Master Plan replaces all of Lincoln's past watershed master plans and was approved by City Council yesterday to be adopted as a sub-area plan in the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. This master plan was also unanimously approved by the NRD Board of Directors on September 14th.
Yeah, I... Could you tell us just briefly what will it achieve and what the ramifications of adopting this plan would be? I mean, if... Just a capsulation of it?
Yeah. So, we have previously watershed master plans where we've studied individual watersheds, and we've come up with projects to address flooding, streams stability, and water quality. And so those projects are what we pick from as funding comes available to, you know, to address those issues. Each of those master plans had... The newer ones had prioritization scoring. Not all of them did. So this comprehensive plan has a unified prioritization scoring. The scoring method always was updated, and then it was applied to all of the projects and all of the master plans. And so now we can kind of use that prioritization to help us select projects. You know, there's still considerations like cost and land rights and other things to consider as we select those projects. But this is, you know, now it's compiling all those master plans into one. So we have one list of projects to pick from.
And so when we... This is... These projects, the goal of these is to eliminate flooding that would damage properties, to control excess rain and water runoff?
Yeah, so it's to... Yeah, to reduce flooding, to address stream stability. So, for example, like on Salt Creek, right at Old Cheney, we did a project in partnership with the county engineering to stabilize Salt Creek as well as protect the bridge. So, you know, protecting infrastructure, homes, businesses from erosion, and then as well as improving our water quality. So we've done a number of water quality projects. A lot of them are in parks, properties to improve water quality.
And so then, this plan is a more comprehen... Bigger, more comprehensive than we've had in the past. It's really just a continuation of work that we've been doing as you pointed out.
Yeah, it's really compiling all of the past plans into one. So each individual plan, we'd hire engineers to go, and they would walk all of the streams. They would do flood modeling, water quality assessments to come up with the issues, and then come up with projects to address those. This comprehensive plan is not doing any additional analysis or field work. It's really taking all of those and putting them into one plan. So it's all organized into one... In one place.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to provide public comment regarding Comprehensive Plan 22005? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And, Mr. Clerk, if you'd read new business item A.
This is a resolution in matter of Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 22005 to amend the 2015 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to add the Comprehensive Watershed Master Plan.
Move approval. Second.
Motion is second to approve. Call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And thank you to the team that worked on this project. I know it took many, many months.
5B is appointment of Brian Sullivan to the Visitors Promotion Committee for the remainder of the term, concluding July 31st, 2025.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Two guys in suits. Nice to see you. So, we're going to tee up here, and I'm going to get out of the way if I can. Just, our August meeting of the VPC, we had an open board seat, committee seat, vacated by Susan Madsen, and through course of process and discussion, we are happy today to bring forward Brian Sullivan, who is at the Embassy Suites in downtown Lincoln. Been there for quite a few years, and I will tell you really quickly, I've known Brian for a long time, as many have in the community. A staunch advocate for tourism. He and I used to compete back in the day, I think I told you guys here a couple of weeks ago, when I was at the Lowly Villager Courtyard and Gardens Hotel at 52nd. No, Brian was with one of the big houses in downtown Lincoln. And I've known Brian very competitively, but also as a friend in the industry, and couldn't think of a better time to have him on this committee as we continue to vision and lay that path for a convention center in the downtown areas. So with that, I'll kick it over to Aaron, and we'll get Brian up here.
Yeah, I agree with everything Jeff said. Brian is a great fit for this role. Like I said in previous meetings, this is a kind of a rotating position that we like to have on that board that is for the kind of bigger box hotels, the convention-style hotels. Obviously, the Embassy Suites fits very well in that slate. And Brian's been in the industry since I started in 2000, 2001. So just a great, great individual to have on this board. So I'll give the time to him to just tell him a little bit about himself.
Yeah, thank you.
Morning, Brian.
Hey, good morning. Appreciate your time and appreciate the nice comments from both Jeff and Aaron, but I'm excited about the opportunity to join the VPC. Started my career at the Cornhusker Hotel in 94. Was there for a handful of years, pre-opening team with the Embassy Suites, and have been there in sales and operation, different types of positions ever since. So I bleed tourism, conventions, all that stuff. I'm a staunch advocate of that, certainly. Anybody that knows me, that is my background, and I believe in that personally and professionally, and the better of the community, and what we can potentially do to put Lincoln on the map more. So I'm excited about the opportunity and happy to answer any questions anybody might have for me.
When you were competing with Jeff, you won, right?
I was gonna say that. I'm like, I didn't really consider us competitors, but if he did, that's okay.
It's so much colder than if you had just said yes.
Yeah. And you know what? We're a close-knit community in the hospitality industry. People, you know, think that you work on the other side of a street against each other. We work together, and that's what I believe in. If, you know, something helps another property, it's only better for me at my property, right? At the end of the day, it's a joint effort. So it's nice you can work with people in the same industry and really get along, and that's one thing I like about what I do. So, yeah.
You know, one of the things that they say is a rising tide lifts all boats.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. So, yeah. And I'm fortunate to work with good people, you know, not only my property and this community. You know, I see a lot of communities don't do the things that we do. At the same time, I think we can do things better, right? And Jeff mentioned convention center. I've talked to that talk a lot of years. I think we're way behind the times on positioning ourselves to get a venue like that in a lot of different ways. There's a long history of that, which we won't get into, but I said before I go, in my lifetime, I hope Lincoln has one, regardless of where I'm at professionally. So, yeah.
Well, I hope you enjoy your service on the VPC. A lot of great people from, you know, around the community that feel the same way about tourism. We do committee assignments every year, and we always fight over who gets to be on the VPC.
Lot of perks, right?
Right.
I've won for the last few years.
Yeah.
Few years. So, no, it's just a great group of people, and working with Jeff and his team is really the highlight. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a resolution in matter of setting a public hearing regarding a request to vacate the right-of-way of Southwest 86th Street between West Sawtilla Road and West Bennett Road in Lancaster County.
Good morning. John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. This is a request to go ahead and vacate Southwest 86th Street. So this request is for you to do a resolution to set up a hearing so that we can talk a little bit more about it. This is currently a dirt road. It lies between West Bennett Road and West Sawtilla Road. To the north Sawtilla Road, just that little section, has been vacated previously. This is a roadway over the years that has basically been used as a dump site. We've had a lot of garbage hauled out there, a lot of deer carcasses, those kind of things. It's just a road we'd like to get off of our inventory list.
I would move in favor of the resolution.
Yeah, I would second that. Sounds like a good move.
Mm-hmm.
Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a resolution in a matter of insulating the westbound school bus stop-ahead sign on Sawtilla Road approximately 300 feet west of South 38th Street.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. We have received a request for a school bus stop-ahead sign at this location. We have studied this and per the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, we are recommending that we install a sign at this location.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Motion is second to approve. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
If I remember correctly, that came at the request of constituent, right?
I think there were a few that come at the request. They mostly come at requests of constituents. Some, I think the important thing to note is that we do review every request. We don't grant every request. We review for conformance with the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Okay.
IV is a resolution in a matter of removing an existing eastbound caution-drive-right sign on Davie Road approximately 2,400 feet west of North 176th Street, and replace it with an eastbound school bus stop-ahead sign on the existing signpost in the same location approximately 2,400 feet west of North 176th Street.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Similar, we have received a request at this location. We have reviewed this request for conformance with the manual, and we are recommending a installation of a school bus stop-ahead sign at this location.
Move approval.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is a resolution in a matter of authorizing the county board chair or vice chair to sign the Preliminary Engineering Services Supplemental Agreement Number One with JEO Consulting Group, Inc.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is the location where we received HSIP funds, or Highway Safety Improvement Funds, to do intersection improvements at this location. This item and the one that precedes it, because there's always two agenda items, are in regards to this intersection.
Move approval.
And it's an 80/20 split. Sorry, Commissioner Flowerday. I just thought it was important for people to know.
Nope, that's helpful.
Second.
Can I call the roll, please?
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 5G is a professional services agreement supplemental number one with JEO Consulting Group for Preliminary Engineering Services. The estimated cost is $103,736.09. Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is a grant contract to reimburse the Lincoln Children's Museum for promotional costs from the Visitors Promotion Fund in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
Everybody, if you guys remember, this is a grant for Lincoln Children's Museum for the $5,000. This is for their apple tree exhibit, just renovation, just to promote and marketing for that. VPC did approve that back in August.
Apple Tree Exhibit?
What's that?
What is the exhibit?
It's just, I haven't personally seen it, but it's an exhibit that they've had, and they're just doing a major renovation of that exhibit. It's got great standings of bringing repeat business back to the children's museum and just kind of revamping that exhibit there, so.
I would move approval of that. And just as a comment, I remember that I spoke with, you know, about the pollinators aspect of it, so.
Oh, good.
So.
Okay. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is a grant contract to reimburse the Lincoln Veterans Parade Group for promotional costs from the Visitors Promotion Fund in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
This is another grant that was approved by the VPC back in our August meeting. Such a wonderful event, Veterans Parade. This is something we've done for many years now, and, yeah, just a great... Just a great event. Roma knows all about it. She's Grand Marshal, so.
And they were very efficient. We volunteered to help with the parade, and I think we got an email even before we got it on the board meeting.
Thank you.
Would you like to make the motion?
I would move approval, yes.
Thank you.
Second.
We all second.
All right. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
J is a recommendation from the prison agent and county sheriff to award a contract to Columbus Corporation for Hall of Justice Furniture in the amount of $60,630.63.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
All right. Mr. Hyer, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your service. We appreciate that very much. And congratulations to you. You'll be leaving pretty soon for a new job.
December 20th.
Good for you.
Counting the days.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to ask a few questions about the jail. I don't know whether you're aware of it or not. You may be, you may be not. I talked with Dennis Meyer last week, and I don't know if you know this or not, but your balance on your jail is $25 million. That's a bond that you can do on your own. You don't have to have the city with you at all on this. The number of people in jail right now, under the county, under the city jurisdiction, is presently 400, I'm told. Although your population is 643, I find that a little difficult to believe. I'm not calling him a liar. I'm just saying, I think that population is probably higher than that. Your bill for that is approximately, if you give me just a little time here, is $125 bucks per day. So if you put that out on a per-month basis or a per-year basis, that's $18 million that you are subsidizing the city on. If you assume the bond, the $25 million bond, of which the city is... And you are both paying around $2.2 million or a piece, that's $4 million. That leaves you with $14 million to pay for your pressures in jail. So the city should be paying that and not you or the county. I would assume that that number would be higher, because I think the numbers in the jail and city prisoners would be higher. That's an assumption on my part and nothing else. It used to be at one time, we received city prisoners in jail, the county prisoners in jail, others in jail. The count now, at the present time, is 643 people. You don't know whether... I don't know whether they're city people. I don't know whether they're county people. I don't know whether they're out-of-state people. I don't know whether they're state people. But it seems to me that the breakdown... The breakdown just happened oh, maybe a year and a half ago. I used to read this every day, and it's not here now. So what I'm just essentially saying is, the city owes you money to the tune of about $15 million that you should be collecting. It isn't your budget anyplace, nowhere. These are monies you should be charging. You should be getting the... You should be taking over the bond yourself, as far as I'm concerned. It's only $4 million a year, $18 million income from the city. See, it's figured out, $14 million in your pocket and in the county's pocket. So actually, the county people outside the city are paying for the city prisoners. End of my report. Thank you very much. Have a great day. Happy holidays, by the way.
All right. Something to think about. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, the announcements, please.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October 20th, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next quarterly meeting on Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, beginning at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commission@lancaster.ene.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV. Link TV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln.ene.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. Link TV apps are also available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV.
All right. Sir, motion to adjourn.
Move the adjourn.
Second.
All right. Motion is second to adjourn. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.ene.gov. Agenda item one are minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022. Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second to approve the minutes from October 4th. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
I move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Second.
All right. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is certification of the 2022-2023 tax levies.
Our motion to approve the 2022...
Move that we approve. Second.
Motion is second to approve the tax levies. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is notice of assessed valuation change for product taxation purposes. This is for Matado LLC and Ryan and Emily Willard.